All right, I'll go ahead and call the meeting. Start with the call, roll call, McKee here, Lamperman here, Friedrich?
Here.
Baron Campbell?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Perfect. And we will go on to the two items today for the work session, which is just reviewing the two department budgets, uh, community development and public safety. And we're starting with community development. Who's gonna start us off? Natalie?
Natalie should.
Perfect.
Yeah, um, I don't.
Go ahead, take the green, yeah, you get the green button.
Oh, it's not green. Oh, what?
Tell me when you're ready.
Okay, now try again.
Whoops. There we go. There we go. Alright, so this is our 2026 budget briefing for community development. And, um, in 2025, this was our organizational chart for our department. We have three divisions, and we have it organized into planning and code enforcement, construction services, and recreation. We are making no personnel change, or proposing no personnel changes for our 2026 budget. Uh, just did wanna highlight that in 2025, we added the community development administrative assistant position, and that was, uh, they were officially onboarded as of January. That has gone incredibly well. It has unlocked significant capacity for all three divisions. And I just wanted to thank the council for, um, authorizing the new position and hiring about this time last year. As far as the services we provide in the department, while it's three divisions, we have several responsibilities, um, including, uh, review of development applications, our long-term planning and implementation, uh, simply education for residents, for property owners, and developers about our ordinances, regulations, and plans. Uh, management of development escrows and financial securities has been something that I've been leaving, um, in collaboration with finance and public works as well. So we also support our planning commission, Parks and Trails Commission, and the Garden Club. And we've also been taking on parks, planning and development, youth recreation programming, park amenity reservations. So that has included, uh, used to include the community room here at City Hall. Obviously, that no longer exists. Um, it also has included the pavilion rentals at the, uh, City Park, now known as Heritage Park. And this upcoming year, we will be taking on reservations for the Park Building, once that is available. Uh, community engagement events also falls under recreation. So these are our, um, Night to Unite, uh, Holiday Toy and Food Drive is a big one. And then code enforcement and inspections, rental licensing and inspections. We started a new inspection program this year for new home construction. Um, we also do building and land disturbance permits and sign and fence permits. So we are doing quite a bit, um, between the three divisions. For a quick summary of planning activity that occurred in, so far in 2025, we have processed two city initiated processes and then 27 land use applications. Uh, I won't go into each of these, but you can see that there's been a variety of different applications we've processed. Uh, we still have 13 filed land use applications that have not yet been forwarded to either planning commissioner, city council, um, but they are on the docket. And then, uh, we anticipate three more city initiated processes this year. For construction services, in 2025, we, they have issued 975 permits total. That includes 165 permits for new homes. Um, so this has equated to general building inspections completed by Metro West of over 5,000 here to date. Um, and then staff inspections for construction services includes grading and new home construction site inspections, and I should say final grading, um, and new home construction site inspections. And so that has been about over 100 inspections this year completed by our internal staff. Um, and then it's also with all the billing permits, we've seen, uh, we just wanted to highlight that this has led to an increased net tax capacity. So in 2024, this was at about just under 19 million, um, and which increased to about 20 million, uh, 20 million, 467, uh, dollars in 2025. And then 2026, we are set for, uh, market value as a city of 23 million, 606.
Which I believe is either the first or second highest in Hennepin County jump.
Yeah, it's a pretty significant jump. So, um, that trans- has translated to a lot of work for permits.
Yeah.
So, uh, 2025 rental licenses and code enforcement activity. Rental, I would say, is a collaboration between our code enforcement officer, who is also our planner, Dwight Klingvile, um, and our construction services team. Construction Services has the building code knowledge, whereas Dwight really has the, he's the keeper of the map for density counts and, um, really has the, the enforcement process down in terms of bringing someone into compliance and getting them through the application process. Um, so we had 59 active rental licenses this year, as of this report. Um, so this year, we processed 17 new rental licenses, uh, 10 rental licenses expired, um, either because they weren't being rented out anymore, or they had transitioned to a situation where they're being rented to a, uh, a family member. So they no longer qualified for, they were qualified as a, uh, homestead versus a rental property. And we processed 13, uh, rental license renewals. Um, so so far this year, we've had 12 rental license expense inspections completed by staff. Renewal inspections will begin in 2026. For single-family homes, we had implemented a three-year process. Uh, we don't think that they need to necessarily be inspected every year. We do wanna make sure that we're doing regular inspections. So once every three years, a, that a property has had a rental license, they will be inspected. So next year will be the first time that we'll have properties that will hit that three-year mark. Uh, and then we do also, would do inspections anytime a complaint comes up. So it's not that we wouldn't inspect a property, uh, it's just that we aren't going to, uh, do it outside of a complaint within the three-year period. Um, and then for code enforcement, we've had 33 new code enforcement cases in 2025. We've resolved 30 cases in 2025. So those might be some cases that were lingering from previous years, uh, as well as anything that came up this year. Right now, we have eight active cases we are working through. Um, and Dwight has completed 65 inspections this year for code enforcement.
A quick question on rental inspections.
Mm-hmm.
With the Maple Hill Estates changes, I thought I heard at one point they were starting to take over trailers and rent the trailers out. If that's true, would that be subject to inspection and licensure rather than just renting out the parcel that the trailer's on?
I'd have to double-check our ordinance. I think we did, uh, I can't remember how we handled Maple Hills. It was a little differently than, I believe it was a little differently than the rest of, um, like, single-family homes. Part of the issue with manufactured homes, particularly some of those parks, and I think we knew this when we were going into it, is they're not gonna be able to meet codes. So I think we treated it a little differently. Um, not to say that we can't reevaluate that, but I don't remember off the top of my head how exactly we handled that.
Okay. And maybe, Jeremy, are you speaking to, like, if the ownership group were to own the land it's on and the?
And the structure.
Trailer, and then they're renting it out, and maybe that's a different thing that maybe we need to look at.
Yeah.
It seems like that would be a situation where you would want to drive inspection to make sure that they are safe versus when it's an owner-occupied structure on a rented pad, where I don't think it would be as reasonable.
Yeah, we can certainly, I think we might need to reevaluate our rental ordinance then, I think, to accomplish that, but we can certainly do that, yes.
So I can look at it.
Yep.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I ask the status of a couple of?
Sure.
Code enforcements and stuff?
Uh, I don't think I would be the best person, depending on what it is. Dwight would really, I would say, I'd be probably calling called to Dwight.
Dwight's gonna, is he gonna be here for the meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so maybe either pet in between or?
I can ask. Okay, thanks.
Uh, for recreation, um, the, some highlights for their 2025 activity, it's a little harder to quantify some of the, some of the activity that she's doing. Um, and when I say she, that's Jessica Christiansen-Buck, but, uh, she is a large driver of the planning efforts for Night to Unite. Um, so the neighborhood party at Public Works estimated about 1,100 people this year, and that's the picture right there, um, taken, I believe, by a drone. Uh, I'm assuming that our PD licensed drone expert, Tim, took that picture. Um, and that included 18 additional neighborhood parties as well that do get registered to the city, um, as, and I believe some of you attended those neighborhood parties. Uh, she also facilitated a tree giveaway. Uh, so there were 625 trees provided for free to community members, and this is funded by Northwest Area JC, so this is done in collaboration with them. Uh, we only had youth baseball this year due to the construction project at the park, but we did have approximately 200 registrants, registrants this year. And she also did some, uh, collaboration with Garden Club and Parks and Trails Commission to provide the club with a shed and tools to, uh, further beautification efforts of our memorial garden, um, in the backyard.
Bark in the park. Look, there it is.
Yeah, Bark in the Park. This was our second year. Um, this is a picture of the Bark in the Park. As you can see, it was not ideal weather conditions. We had 50 attendees estimated. Um, we are hoping that next year, we won't have it, uh, rain event that kind of made, probably made people stay away from it. But, uh, it is kind of a niche group already, but it is enjoyable, especially for those that want to, um, celebrate their dogs. Um, and then still to come, we have, uh, the 2025 Holiday Toy and Food Drive. I just provided some stats last year, um, from last year's successes. So, uh, we had seven neighborhoods participate, 1,500 pounds of food and personal care items donated, another $150 in monetary donations for cross services, and then, um, over $11,000 in toys and monetary donations for toys, for tots. So we do get a lot of participation with that event. Um, and then finally, one of the biggest highlights that we have all had this year, um, in the community development department, but again, mostly with recreation, is the planning of Heritage Park. Uh, we finalized the design and broke ground this year, and we are on track for anticipated completion in May of 2026. Uh, the Diamond Lake Trail, we have been working through some reimbursements already from them, and, uh, also reimbursements from our HUD grant. Uh, we've already received about half of that grant, um, and we are hoping the government shutdown on the federal level might delay this, but we are hoping to see the end, the second half by the end of this year.
We already submitted for payment.
Yeah, we already submitted for payment. We've done everything that we can to ensure that. And then we are currently working with the DNR for potential more funding for the Heritage Park through their grant, um, but we don't have much of an update on that at this time.
That's the one that JCB brought up, the other?
Mm-hmm, correct, yep. So we're working through that. Um, again, I, I think the federal government shutdown is not helping that at the moment.
For sure.
Um, and again, with collaboration with our PD, uh, drone licensed.
Awesome.
Specialized area, oh, this is what Heritage Park looks like right now.
Nice parking lot.
But, um.
Gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, so we're.
But just the, the footage and the quality is really cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, is there any quantification of Three Rivers Parks in any of this? Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, a lot of this stuff is our money and such and, uh?
We are supposed to get a ridiculous amount from the trail. Uh, I, I don't have that exact numbers off the top of my head, but yeah, that, that, we have not submitted for that reimbursement yet. The 15,000 that we got is just for the design efforts of the trail, and we did get that.
Didn't we get it down to being reimbursed in two-year period?
So that changed up. We, we projected potentially 1.2 million, and it came in considerably less than that, uh, as a consequence. When they figured out the payment, we're actually gonna get it all at once. It's all in, gonna be less than 700,000. I think it was, uh, 600 and something.
Yeah, I, I.
But that's because costs were less, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, the cost for construction of the trail was significantly less.
Was it less because of the parking lot and the synergies of the equipment and that kind of thing, or why was it less than expected?
Uh, bids, bids are unpredictable, you know? So we, we had gone potentially thinking that we'd phase it, because they didn't wanna do more than 500,000 in a given year, and then it came up to 1.2 million, and they're gonna phase it for two years, and when it hit their budget process. And then when the bids came back, it actually, they're willing to pay us all in one, just the timing of it is.
It's a good chunk of that trail that they can get done at once.
Yeah, and it's in, you can see it. It goes, you know, the, the western side.
All the way around to the M and I homes.
So that would be.
There's people biking around here.
Nice.
Now we need our tunnel.
They'll be working on that, not there, but.
So for some 2026 opportunities on the horizon, we are anticipating, uh, formally kicking off the 2050 comprehensive plan efforts. Um, the strategic economic development plan that's on the agenda at the, uh, regular meeting tonight. Uh, we also, uh, have on our radar the potential for the ma- a master park plan to move forward, to identify and proceed with our next park development projects. Um, and then we are in collaboration with the city clerk's office. We are working on a MuniCode implementation that we're hoping can roll out in 2026. Um, a Heritage Park grand reopening is anticipated, including the Park Building to be available for, uh, public use. And then community engagement for our civic campus detail planning. And then, as I said earlier, it'll be the first time that we'll have any renewal inspections of rental properties. So that is what's on the horizon for us.
Can I ask one more question before you jump?
Sure.
Slides, MuniCode, what is that?
That's, it's an online hosting of our codes. We'll no longer have a PDF. It'll be a much easier process. So, um, the, the two that we looked at was American Legal and MuniCode.
Cool.
Have you ever gone through Rock, City of Rogers code?
I've seen a lot of different ones and stuff. That's huge. Thank you.
You can search it by word. You can find them. You can click to save random portions of code, and then it prints it out on one page or saves it to one document and.
When we had gone out to council asking for recommendations for the 2026 budget, that was one of the top three that we've all asked for.
Thank you.
You could even, like, in the appendix, put our charter documents too, just so everything is there and easy reference.
I was thinking it was gonna be a liquor store.
It would be nice either to have a AI interface where you can query ChatGPT or something on the code base, or have something people could copy and put into their own subscription, like a Word document version or a text version that could drag over and then ask questions.
You can make a, uh, a Word, Word document copy.
Okay.
Of it. You just click, if you, if you want certain versions, you click it, and it prints out a Word, or saves a Word document copy.
The whole thing.
Or you can click the top, and it clicks every one. It makes it into a Word document just verbatim from.
See if we can get a 700-page Word document.
Yeah. If you wanted.
Or yeah, you can get it by section, you can get it by subsection.
And also, I've, I've noticed too, if you give it, like, on ChatGPT at least, if you give it the link, it will search. So if you say, look.
I've struggled to get that to work. If that does, that would be awesome.
I've had success even with our code, actually, on that, so.
Okay, that's good.
Happy to try to go through with it.
Please, thank you.
So then, um, one last drone footage for you. This is to show one of the opportunities. This is the open space park at, um, Bellwether. Uh, and this is where the belt, the boardwalk is supposed to be going in.
When is that going in?
Imminently at this point. Um.
Soon as it gets cold enough?
Yeah. Uh, I think Kevin might have more answers to that, but yeah, I think they were expecting this year even to get started on it yet.
Last conversation was the end of October, but it's contingent on weather.
And again, thank you PD for your help.
Looking for a scared bicyclist on that.
All right, and then to the nitty-gritty of our department. So, um, overall, we, in 2025, we had a budget just under 1.5 million. Um, for the overall department, we are, um, requesting about one point, a little under 1.7 million for 2026. This is an increase of 201,000 and some change, and a percentage change of about 13.4%. Um, in planning, uh, the primary increase is coming from our, um, personnel costs. So this includes wages and benefits. So in the increases in wages, uh, including a cost of living adjustment and our annual step increases is where we're seeing most of that increase. Um, about 21,000 overall and a 6.9% change. Planning professional services is, uh, proposed to go down by about 8,000. Uh, so we're, this is being driven by an estimated reduced reliance on landform for code enforcement. We have not needed to request help for them, or very minimal help, I should say, for about two years now. So I, we are basically taking that out of the budget at this time. But we still do, um, uh, if, we are expected to pay for half of the cost of MuniCode, since a significant portion of our code is the subdivision and zoning ordinance. Um, and then we also, um, I should say, this really isn't also, but then the 2050 comp plan will be budgeted out of a different fund, our long-term planning fund. So that's not being reflected here. And then planning and training and op- planning, training and operating expenses, it does have a bit of an increase of about 3,000, 500. Um, and this is actually primarily driven by increase in the costs for software and dues and memberships. All of that was projected to increase when I was looking at it for our budget planning.
Can you go back real quick?
Yes.
So 20.4% for that one?
20.4%, uh, 3,450 cost overall.
Gotcha. Smaller numbers.
Yeah, but because it's, it's a pretty small budget to begin with, it, it does look higher percentage-wise.
Makes sense. Thank you.
And then, I should note, so material changes are what's gonna be highlighted here in yellow. So that was defined this year as greater than 5,000 and a 10% increase.
The reason I wanna clarify that is because, uh, as we fluctuate within the different department budgets, department heads have discretion over a $5,000 change. And so anything that went above and beyond their discretion to just, I wanted to draw attention to it. And then also the reason it's "and" a 10% increase, because as we just identified on that first slide, uh, you know, it could be a 30% increase, but it might only be $800. And so that, that's not really the level of concern that council has. And so that's why we've had a $5,000 and 10%.
So for the budget for construction services, uh, the, there is an increase for personnel expenses primarily just due to the increase in wages this year, as well as the projected increase in employer-paid insurance. So that resulted in about $32,000 difference, and that is a change of just over 10%, closer to 11%.
Can I ask a quick question on that one? So if we have issues with inspections, for example, like at Bellwether, and we get billed by Metro West inspections, do we receive a discount if we find that there's been something amiss with the inspections on specific houses at Bellwether? Like, if there's an issue, like if someone has brought in a private, and I'm just making this up, a private person to come in and do an inspection, and they find that, I don't know, their trusses were not connected properly or something, and now they have to have their whole roof line redone because this inspection part was missed?
They'll probably have to look at the contract.
Yeah, they'd have to look at the contract. I don't know that we get a discount, because they did complete an inspection. Even if something was missed, I don't know that that means that they would give the city a discount for missing something.
So like, how do we hold them accountable then for a missed inspection? That's what I mean.
Yeah, I can look at the contract, I, um, that.
And just trying to protect the city?
Maybe if you go look into the contract and see if you can get a contract with a few other cities that use them.
Well, plus also, does that become a civil matter? So in terms of, in, in, that would be a question for our lawyer, uh, in terms of a private homeowner having issue, uh, and that ultimately would be between them and the builder.
But if the builder is contracted by the city and this, and the contractor missed that inspection?
We didn't build it, though. That's what I'm saying. So, so even if we missed it in inspection, the builder would still be the one who's liable, because they're the ones who didn't build it with the right materials.
Okay.
While, while we may have missed to done an inspection, we could look at a contract, but in terms of city liability, it would be the per, the people who didn't build it to standard.
Okay. So the inspector would have no responsibility?
Well, we'd have to look at the contract to determine what the responsibility is. But, but in terms of, you said you wanted to protect the city from liability.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
What I'm saying is, a private home builder, uh, if it wasn't built to standard.
Yeah.
The liability lies with the person who built it, not someone who inspected it.
Which is true. I just, if that's our sub, if we're contracting with that company, I guess that's what my question is too, is, is making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, to ensure that the people that are moving into those homes, that they're built to what they're supposed to be.
Well, they're not inspecting it for the home bill, they're, they're inspecting it for the city to make sure it meets the standards. So if the homeowner has concerns about whether it's being built to standard, that's actually a homeowner issue. It's not, we're, we're not the ones that are saying, yep, this.
Well, and I'll also say, building code is like a bare minimum. Um, so it's not necessarily going to be high-quality. So if, if the workmanship is under question, that might be a different story than whether or not it meant bare minimum building code per Minnesota law.
Okay.
So there is a difference between that and.
Should we be concerned about that? I mean, if we have people moving into our city, and if we have, if, if there's that kind of situation happening, I mean, I'm not just saying in Bellwether it could be any new development, because there's so much new development happening. Would there be something that the city should be doing more of to make sure that those houses are being built?
Can I jump in for a second?
Yes, please.
I've got a coworker who has told horror stories about her daughter's development, not in Corcoran, but lots of people in that neighborhood have had a lot of water issues with infiltration in windows, and they, they think it was related to the windows themselves. But regardless, there were like 15 homes that had to have a lot of things redone. So I think your question is, if something like that happens in Corcoran, what is the city's exposure to that? Are we responsible to catch it? If we don't catch it, what's the recourse somebody could have against Corcoran?
Against Corcoran, but also just like as good stewards of people moving into our city, should we be doing something? I mean, I know it's a bare bones minimum, or is that just what it is?
I'm not aware of a city that has a code higher than the Minnesota building code. We could look into it. I, I have not heard of that.
And, and I would, as, as we're talking about tightening down, we're, we're currently, you know, watching the legislature, trying to take all of our authority away. And so I, I do think we wanna be very intentional about what and how we're, we're implementing things, uh, because that could potentially become ammo that actually results in us losing authority altogether.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I know.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to speed up my time here, because I know we're hitting about a half-hour mark. Um, the highest increase that we're seeing for construction services, professional services, uh, that was a, uh, increase of 150,000 proposed, which is a change of 33%. And the reason why is because in the last two years, that is, uh, what we have been hitting. For, we've been hitting about $600,000 in costs. I will note that any increase in this cost is offset with the expected increase in building permit, permit revenue that the city sees. So for example, if the permit revenue is less than anticipated in 2026, then we would not anticipate that we would be spending as much in professional services, but assuming that we stay around 200 building permits a year. And then, uh, commercial and industrial building permits are significantly more expensive than homes as well in terms of pro- the revenue and processing. Um, then, I'm sorry, but that, if, if we're assuming that, we're kind of staying status quo at that level, then we are, uh, really, the revenue should be projected more at 600,000.
Can I ask you one more question? This is just, sorry, I don't mean to stick on this, but like, if we're paying, and maybe not, how much do we pay Metro West in a year inspections approximately?
It varies based on the number of.
Yeah.
Could I make a recommendation? Uh, if you've got concerns about permits and the processes of it, could we come back and discuss that at another time? Because, because we do have another, and I wanna validate that, but.
Yeah.
This isn't a budget question. This is a process question. And could I request that we do that at a, at an update time? Like, we could provide a, uh, an update in the future?
We bring more in revenue than we're paying Metro West, because we also, the building permits have to also account for the staff costs. Um, so we believe that we are, it's, it should be.
It's a wash.
It should be a wash.
Try to adjust it to always be a wash, yeah.
Yeah. We're just, at this point, the last two years, we have gone over $450,000 for the expend, expenditures. So now everything that I'm processing right now is in the red. Um, when really that, it's just, I think that the numbers need to reflect what we're actually spending.
It looks like it's in the red, but we're actually getting revenues in that are offsetting that red. It's just, now the budget doesn't look balanced, because now your revenues are way more than projected, and your expenses are also way more than projected.
Um, and then finally, there was a, a, a small increase for training and operating expenses for them. So part of this, it's a, part of this increase, it was less than 10% and less than 5,000. But increase in operating supplies as a result of the specialized inspections that they're carrying out. So they do need some equipment to do, to carry out some of those expected inspections. Um, and then increased in estimated engineering fees are based on 2024 and 2025 data as well. So that's where we're getting that number. Um, and then for recreation, this budget went down. So that was exciting. So it was just a small decrease, though. Um, there, like everything else, personnel costs are up. Uh, but this division, we were able to offset some of that because the budgeted overtime and employer-paid insurance did decrease for them. Um, so we're just, uh, just less than $5,000 change for them. Um, and then for recreation, training and operating expenses, it's a, a reduction of about $2,000. And the reduction is, uh, in anticipated credit card fees based on 24 and 25 data. And then park planning anticipate, is anticipated to be primarily paid out of park dedication. So we, um, don't need to budget for that here.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Could, could you go back? The personnel wages, how, how many people does this account for?
That accounts for part of my salary, um, Christiansen-Buck's salary, and then also accounts for part of our administrative assistant salary.
And a part-time.
And it also include, this is not just wages, this is also our benefits. So that includes the insurances and even, um, oh, yeah, as well, that we do have a part-time recreation staff and, oh, seasonal recreation staff. Um, and then, um, Um, and then, um, I can pull up the actual, but it's more than just the the what they're seeing in their paycheck. It's also all of the benefits, all of the insurances, including workers' comp and things like that.
And and for you as well, right?
Correct, for me and the administrative assistant.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That 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 helps me a lot because just looking at recreation personnel, I I don't think of you as being in that group. So when I look at this number, it seems high.
I am though. Yeah, but I am in that group. By meeting that group, she does a lot of the, she's she's the face of it, but I am her supervisor. So I am very involved with it. And I would say like for, uh, construction services, they're at three hundred and twenty nine thousand, but again, that includes part of my salary, a part of, um, our administrative assistant, and then same with planning.
Good to know. Thank you.
Can I add on something to that real quick? Um, would we, would it be beneficial to have like a separate community development item and then have separate budgets underneath each of those? Like, like you as the director have your own budget. And then because you're overseeing those departments, each department then would have its own budget versus splitting your salary between the three of them or four of them?
So the way that we distribute that, there there's a lot of different ways you can approach payroll. But that is a strategy that the city's adopted and we use it not just in that department, but in several departments.
Yeah.
Uh, and and that then allows us to adjust it based upon what we're assessing is the use of their time. So if there's such a time in which a particular area grows and it's taking up only twenty percent of the time,
Sure.
then then the budget adjusts accordingly. It's a lot more difficult to do than the alternative that you suggested.
Okay.
It's very easy for us to adjust the dials.
Yeah, it just seems like it'd be more transparent the other way, just kind of piggybacking on what Mark had suggested or was asking the question, that's all.
So I I would say in terms of transparency, uh, when we do do the budget brief, it's actually in the notes.
Okay.
So it's it's explained how that's broken down in the notes of our budget.
And that is my presentation. So, uh, the request is to discuss the budget. There's any changes you'd like to see. Um, but I am confident that what I'm proposing is fairly fine tuned, or not fairly, is fine tuned to the exact dollar that I project needing to use in twenty twenty six.
Thank you. Any other questions for that all? Okay, on to Matt. You've got twenty eight minutes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will try and go quickly so that we leave plenty of time for conversations as we get there. Um, if you have questions about like process, structure, happenings, we'll take those until we go. And if you get to the dollar and cents question, we'll try and do them at the end because I'm hopefully going to hit them for you at the later part of the conversation. So.
That's good.
Again, first slide, just for context, um, you know, Montevideo doesn't submit crime stats for this, for the purpose of this, but you are in a city that has ranks in the top two agencies this year for safety in the in the state of Minnesota. So our agency takes a lot of pride in what we do and we do it with, um, a relatively small team. And I think part of that is because of investments by the council and the city in public safety. If you'd go to the next slide, please, um, really this is, we try and tie back to how we do what we do to our our mission and our values within the police department. And really, you know, the I think the key part of it is at the at the bottom mission statement where it says our citizens will determine our success. So we try and be responsive to our community. We try and make sure that they're providing, um, exceptional quality of service. And that exceptional quality of service takes extra time. Um, but I think our people try and do a good job of giving that extra time that a lot of the other communities might not be able to do. Um, again, missing from this photo are our, um, Officer Hoffman and off and our, um, Officer Bolson, Lieutenant Bolson. Um, but that's, that's the big part of your team right there. And, uh, Officer Steve Warren that is in the middle there, and we were able to celebrate his retirement. So next slide, please. Um, now this isn't based on the calendar year, but we've had a lot of new faces since twenty twenty four. Um, and these are, all these folks are a huge part of our success and how we're, how we are able to be successful. But also don't forget the investment that it takes to get somebody up and going when we look at, um, several months of training and equipment and outfitting. Just the onboarding process for all of those, for for anyone as an individual is a is a big lift. Um, and the fact that we brought all of them on and we're we're proud to have all of them on our team. So if you've got a chance to meet any of them, um, I think you'd be, you'd be pretty impressed with the the caliber of folks that we've been able to add to our team. Um, so we're we're excited to bring them in and they are all picking things up, uh, picking things up quickly. So next slide, please. Um, again, we celebrated, um, Officer Warren's retirement, twenty eight years of service. Happy that he's been able to enjoy the retirement he deserves and, uh, thank you for those of you that were able to come and help share in that celebration of his career. Next slide, please. And sadly, this year, very recently, um, we lost Lieutenant John Kiefer, um, passed away. And he was one of the original founding members of our Corcoran Reserve Program back in nineteen eighty three. So forty two years of volunteering to our community. And it, his loss will really be felt, uh, across the department, but he gave so much of himself over those years. And he's never one that wanted, um, pride or pomp and circumstance. So if we, if you join me, maybe we can just give him a a few moments of silence just to remember the impact that he had on our community. Again, thank you, John, for your service. And, uh, like you said, we're, we are in touch with the family, waiting for the opportunity that we can somehow contribute to his memory. So we don't know what that looks like yet.
Just, Mayor, just for me and what I believe the city should or could do is some type of plaque, something, um, posted somewhere. I know Jay, you and I have talked about stuff like that too, but absolutely one of the pillars in our community and not one of those forty two years of service can, he'd get a dime for all volunteer. This is unheard of, um, in a lot of communities. He was an extreme participant and contributor to our city. So. Thank you, John.
Well said. Um, we were able to celebrate some awards and recognition, um, this year in our police department. So again, you know, talk about service, our our Deputy Director Ryan Burns, uh, thirty years of service to the city. Again, tremendous contributions over his time here. Pete and I had our ten year mark. We had a couple of I ninety four chamber award winners, uh, Lieutenant Bolson. You know, fortunately, we were able to bring him on full time this year. Um, I think he's been a a great addition to our department and and again, his contributions recognized at the I ninety four chamber. And we were also able to to, uh, give out several public commendations awards for those members that have contributed to our, uh, to our community's safety. Next slide, please. Um, again, I know, you know, I'm talking about, I've said this a couple of times, but we we run, as far as full time staff goes, and I was reminded again at I A C P, we run a very small group of people for how much ground we cover, both in the community safety, but also the events. So we we put a few of the events up there. Um, again, we get help with C V on a lot of those events and all of the city stepping up to make those things happen. And to varying degrees, um, you know, different parts are owned by different different divisions, but it's it's no small, any one of those is is no small lift. And we're excited to be able to contribute even to the county events that are put on by outside agencies like the Lions or J C's when we're doing the rodeo and tractor pull. There's there's some significant planning and and participation. And part of the reason I think that we're able to pull them off so smoothly is the commitment from our staff that, you know, they're changing, they're they're working overtime, they're picking up, uh, schedule changes. And they they take a lot of pride in them. Um, if you, you know, if you've come to firearm safety or you come to any of those classes and and talk to our officers, it's clear they're not just putting their time in. They really love doing what they're doing and I think we're blessed to have them. And again, it's, it seems like there's, seems like as soon as one event wraps up, we're on our way to the next one. So, um, next slide, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Matt, one of the coolest additions to your uniforms was the hats at, uh, the rodeo that just a lot of people complimented. How long have you cops been wearing cowboy hats?
Our our people had a lot of fun with that.
That it is, that's that's huge. Thank you for, uh, the small investment there.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and again, some some shots from the holiday toy and food drive. And it goes to show that like our reach expands beyond our community. You know, when we're down at the K R eleven and we're, um, doing some of those events, we're, our impact is felt beyond our community. And as many of you know, we have visitors at night to unite from other communities. And their impression of Corcoran is what they see at night to unite, what they see at Toys for Tots. And that's what people hear when they, when they hear about Corcoran, I, this is how we want them to hear and think about our community. Because it it's a way, I think, to help project our identity and, uh, and show people what we stand for. So we're, our our people are proud to be a part of that and thank you for the opportunity to do it. Uh, we continue to get better. Uh, we're, you know, you you'll see our training costs increasing, but really it's, a lot of it is time investment is where the greatest impact comes. And Sergeant Dan Wilcox, as he's been getting going, has been developing our training program tremendously. I can say that without a doubt, our proficiency has increased dramatically. The officers love it and hate it because he takes them to task and they are held constantly held to a very high training standard. Dan is very passionate about what he teaches and he will not stop teaching until he succeeds and until our people succeed. So he's doing it for the right reasons and he's making us better and our and our cops are being forced to work a lot harder than they ever have been at the at their trainings. So it is fun to watch the proficient proficiency grow. If we can keep that same professionalism and increase our our tactics and our our specialty training, I think we're going to continue to, um, stay at the top of that community safety list. And I think it also helps us when we're bringing in new people. We have a very young department. So there is a very steep learning curve and steep expectations for the young people that we're bringing on board. It takes a lot of reps to get up to proficiency and to to operate at our standard and our expectations for our department. Dan's been a huge part of that. And and we have several other instructors on the department and in addition to developing and training our patrol officers, he's training our next trainers. And so we're trying to build that, uh, spirit and culture of constant learning and constant improvement. So as we continue to raise our base level, Dan continues to develop that and and really seek out folks who have an interest in expanding that. So we aren't resting on our laurels. We aren't, um, sitting back and just happy to be where we're at. We we have come a long ways and I think we're going to continue to improve in the in the training and the standards that we set for our staff. Next slide, please. And we are cross training with other our other communities and our neighbors as well. So, uh, you know, mentioned on that slide, multi jurisdictional. We do on shift trainings where our officers report the beginning of their shift, go to their neighbors. So we've we've done on shift trainings with, uh, recently, we've done them with Medina, Rogers, West Hennepin. So that training that's happening isn't just within our department. We're doing it with our neighbors who they might be backing up on those calls or who might be backing us up. And so we're continuing actually to have a regional impact. And even when we have the in-house trainings here, we're on some instances, we're inviting the other agencies to continue to train with us. So not only do we build that, the collaboration and relationships, but we can hopefully try and elevate regionally, uh, our law enforcement presence. So. Again, some of the big successes that we've had and and I kind of call them community impacts, but Rocky continues to be a tremendous asset for us. Uh, I think we've got to get another go on with a great disposition. And he is.
Strong bike.
Yes, and he is fun to fun to have around. Jay, it it works, right?
It it works.
I'd like to see that again.
I've got the video. We need someone, uh.
No, a new one. I needed enough.
We need someone in the suit, Mark.
Mark the sleeve will fit you.
I I'm sure, I might do it something.
Rocky would break him like a stick.
Uh, so we're we're having, we're still having success with that and we're we're, uh, we're proud of what he's able to do for us and and our neighboring agencies appreciate it as when he's able to help out as well. We were able to add a Lucas device to squads, which is a tremendous lifesaving tool when when deployed on scene for cardiac events. Those used to only available, be available when the fire department arrived on scene. We have one that gets deployed, um, depending on the shift, depending who's on, if they're trained and which squad it ends up in. But the little things like that, we were able to get that through a grant. And that was initiated by our officers who identified the grant, which is through the same, uh, grant program that we got our A E Ds. So again, a department initiated, found the funding, found, created the training. And, uh, we're out there trying to make lifesaving impact with it.
Was that like a CPR device?
Yeah, so it straps on to the torso and then it will do the chest compressions.
Okay.
Very, much more accurately than a than a human would.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, Matt, a question I have, and I'm I'm starting to see them show up more frequently. Are the permanent speed signs in communities, um, was traveling through, um, Maple Plain on Saturday? And they've got them in some pretty discreet neighborhoods? How much are those signs? They look like they're solar powered.
You mean the ones that are like a lot of posts with a with the speed limit sign?
Yeah.
There's one on Hackmore too in Medina.
Yeah, I I don't think they're that outlandish as far as cost. And I've actually approached Kevin, um, talking, you know, trying to, asking him to talk about the feasibility of potentially making that part of our roadway spec on collector roads. So roads like Steeg, Gleason, that are local, but also designed to see traffic. That's where we hear the most about it. But the observations that we see oftentimes are that when we're data collecting that we're not seeing. So it's a perception thing. It's also a good reminder. So if you see them and you are traveling at a speed, it does slow folks down, but it also tells the neighbor.
It doesn't slow them down much. When we have the one on ten both directions, I hunt around for rush hours and stuff and people don't slow down. They they, some even speed up.
The squad went there for a day.
Down on Gleason, it was the same thing. And and I don't know if you've got statistics wrapped around. Um, I assume you've patrolled that and those kind of things. Are there stats on how many people from Corcoran were cited for speeding? Um, those kind of things and how many people outside the city? And then what can we do to get everybody to slow the heck down other than just coding for, uh, the enforcement from your staff, our staff?
So again, it's a little bit separate from the budget conversation, but so we don't sort them necessarily by where they're where they're from, but we do go out and data collect at times based on volumes and that kind of stuff. So we can talk about some of the individual stuff that we've looked at. Most recently was out on Steeg, um, but we can certainly look at.
I just feel stationary signs. It would be nice to see a line for.
I agree. Yeah, I think it kind of falls a lot in the in the public works realm because it's a road, it's a right of way sign that's installed and maintained by the city. Uh, it's not in, necessarily, we don't write tickets off of them. It's not necessarily a law enforcement tool, but I would, with what Kevin and I are both, I think.
You can share the cost. How's that?
When are, when are we looking at public works budget?
Uh, the thirteenth of November.
Maybe someone can have a conversation with Kevin just to, if you could put some preliminary information on that that we can look into further later. That's great.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Kind of along. Dean, question?
Um, so there are a couple of cities in the in the Twin Cities area that are act, that have actually implemented speed cameras. So I just was wondering if the cost is not much more than what a sign would be, would it be beneficial to start looking at? And what what does it look like? I have no idea what they look like. Are they like the 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 ones that we already have for license plate readers? Are they like a pie? I have no idea anything about them.
So there's legislative action to allow traffic enforcement by, um, camera, but they they ruled that that's not legal in Minnesota. There's a pilot program in Minneapolis where they've added cameras to be able to do camera based enforcement, but without special legislation, cities can't.
Can't do it.
Can't send, can't mail tickets by camera at this point.
They did that in Germany.
France too.
All right. It started out here before it was.
Yeah, there is, they used to have red light cameras in Minnesota, um, and there was a, I think it was a U S Supreme Court. I'm not sure if that's where the.
Something like a.
They're not able to, not able to do that without some legislative change. And there are cities, to your point, that are working on getting that legislative change.
Chief, um, are you joining us for the council meeting this evening? Will you be available for questions?
Sure, let me know which, I have some coordination stuff I have to take care of, so I'm going to dip out for a little bit. But if you kind of give me an idea of what part you want me in here for, I'll try and I'll make sure that I'm here for those.
Okay, all right. It's, um, hold on one.
Seven B.
Seven B?
Guessing.
Yeah, no problem.
I I I just have three questions for you.
Sure. Yep, sounds good. Um, again, going down community impact, we were able to make that strategic investment in a in a new lieutenant position and that has uh, really been paying dividends. So as we start talking about things like the I C Poet Grant that we've submitted for, he added the capacity to be able to submit for that. Uh, been a great resource as we're trying to continue to improve things like our F T O program, doing some policy work and some of the the real, uh, some of the higher level um, stuff that's, um, not always hands on the street, but it's certainly, it makes a huge contribution to affect how effective we at work as a department. So Darren's been a great addition and it's been, it's been tremendous for our, for our department and have gotten a lot of positive feedback. I think Jay's heard feedback from the department as well that supporting that. So thank you for that investment. Uh, we've kicked off our our Coffee with a Cop program, which was again, started up by grant funding initiated by one of our sergeants submitted for the grant from, that was last year, Minnesota Chiefs of Police grant, uh, to kick off that Coffee with a Cop program. And that's been, we found varying levels of participation, but we're going to obviously keep doing it. Um, and we're going to keep trying to improve it, keep doing better, but it's been met with-
Let's say if, like, at least for me, I, I wasn't fully aware of it beforehand. I saw on Facebook maybe like the other. If you reach out to council members, I think like, and I hope for the revenue one, I could help get people there or at least like get the word out. And I'm sure other council members in different areas could, could help with that too, because I think it's a cool idea.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that. That'd be great. Uh, we've also started our, this year began the Corcoran Police Association, which was initiated by the officers. An association that is not specifically city-funded, it's not city-run, it's run by the group of officers. And by the bylaws, you have to be affiliated with the Corcoran Police Department in some way to be a part of it. But their impact in a very short time is already being recognized in the community. They've done some, they made a donation to uh, Shulex Breast Fest. They helped initiate and facilitate the per, pink and purple patch program, where members of the public are able to purchase patches that are pink or purple. Pink being breast cancer awareness, purple being um, working to um, elevate the presence of domestic violence. And, and you know, that partners well with Maria's voice that you guys have, have heard that we're, we're partnering with. And they've also facilitated uh, the creation of our department challenge coins. So kind of a source of pride for officers, being able to share that when they're working with other officers. And so those are a few items in a very short time that they're beginning to be seen in the community and really trying to make that positive impact, both as a support mechanism for the, for the officers internally and also trying to make that positive impact on the community that in ways that the city might not technically be able to on their own.
So they make donations to specific groups in Corcoran?
At this point, they made a, they made a donation to Breast Fest. Again, it's only six months old, so they haven't really been able to build up a, a depth. And their funding was paid by basically membership dues, the officers paying to be a part of it. So they'll be looking for partnerships either to um, receive donations from nonprofits to be able to facilitate things like the pink patch program or the challenge coins. Or if there's, you know, a department member in need from a critical incident, they may be able to help support them or their family for, you know, flowers or cards or support.
They had a table set up at night to night. Okay, yep.
Yep. Um, and we'll, we'll talk briefly in the budget about Flock, but it's been a, there's been some major accomplishments. Um, some of the, the, the high level stuff, you know, we, at a high level, we had a hundred and seventy-three different cases affiliated since we implemented them. Now that's everything from low-level traffic related to warrants or, you know, uh, um, like cops alerts or things like that. But also on specific cases, um, we were able to locate and arrest an armed assault suspect that was in, in our downtown area. It was found, he did have a loaded handgun with him, was wanted for violent crime and was in town um, making deliveries for, for a company. And that was spotted because of Flock when he hit the border. Uh, we were able to locate him and um, and take him into custody. We had a, a local first-degree criminal sexual conduct case that was one of ours that we were able to locate and arrest the suspect because of the Flock camera hit. Uh, we also had a, a business that was, that was hit by a drive-by shooting. And we were able to identify the suspect, take him into custody, recover the weapon and, and prepare a case. So those were all directly apprehended because of it. So there's, it's, it's having the large-scale like headline impact, but just day-to-day as well as it's having that, that positive impact on um, being able to make sure that we're aware of things coming and going from our community that might be, that we might need to know about.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, Matt, we are in year one, coming to an end on Flock.
We are, the bill for year three is coming up, so you will see that in this upcoming budget.
But I mean, we did, are we in our second year?
We are finishing our second year, yep.
Gotcha. Thanks.
So that's about a year and a half of data, I believe, so by the time, next year-
Do we need-
It'll be mid-next year, I think, when our, when our uh, bill comes due for-
Do we need more cameras?
I think right now, we're doing well in the city and we need to do better. And this is on the police department about engaging the HOAs and the businesses to contribute to that.
Okay.
Um, we've been cautious, we've been sharing that that opportunity is there, but we want to make sure that this is going to continue before we get the private folks to invest in something and that we, and we pivot from it, so.
As, as we were driving around Denver, I was uh, with, with Matt, I was surprised outside of businesses, outside of HOAs, in which I, I obviously didn't see the contracts, but it was evident to me that it was intentional about the location. So it's either trying to impact potential theft in business, uh, or it was at an entrance to a, a HOA or a neighborhood. Uh, so Matt's comment, they're like, we saw it in real time as we're driving through some of these neighborhoods in Denver, that this is how they've been able to implement it is leveraging those, those partnerships.
Chief, do you have any concerns about uh, Flock's partnership that was just announced with Ring cameras?
I do not. So I have not read the details of it. I know at a high level of their partnership. Uh, I know that, so Ring used to have its own interface with law enforcement. Um, they ended that over public scrutiny and I think Ring is looking to try and find other partners to contribute to law enforcement through. So at, at this point, I don't have concerns, but if you have concerns, I'd be interested and we can sit down and kind of hear what, what that, what the concerns are. And if we have, if we need to post off questions to them, we're not afraid to do that.
Great, thank you.
Um, some of the things that were, were, that are challenging in our continued efforts in the departments, things that we're really, uh, we're working hard on. So this past year, we've had multiple uh, critical incident debriefs. Uh, a lot of people don't think that very much happens in Corcoran, but uh, our officers deal with some pretty uh, pretty substantial incidents. And we do everything that we can to keep them well and, and give them the resources to make sure that they're operating at their best. We're continuing to do that, but as you've seen how much hiring we've had to do, how we're bringing people on board. Um, we're um, we're dealing, our, our folks are dealing with a lot of stuff. And so far, we've got a tremendous team that's proven to be very resilient. But the, the critical incidents are, you know, there's several a year that are happening and we're, we're working through them. Uh, we still, the personnel and shift coverage, just by trying to make sure that we're getting coverage at the peak times is, you know, we, our officers have to be flexible. It's not always in their best interest. They do the best that they can to make sure that we have the coverage where we need it. Um, since our retirement in February, we've had an open spot since March. We've interviewed a handful of people and the ones that we've interviewed, we haven't been willing to lower our bar for. So we have had an open position since March. And that decision actually has been made by a lot of our, in that first round interview, is one of our sergeants and our patrol officers. And they're the ones that actually, to their credit, saying, this isn't someone we can bring on to our team. And so they, they hold a very high standard for our department and our city, but it costs them. They miss time off, they miss family events because they know they're, they're not going to have the coverage that we need all the time. And they're still trying to do it right. So I credit them for making some of those decisions, but we need people and we need to find ways to get them. And we'll talk about that as we get into the positions that we're talking about upcoming, that um, the IC Poet grant, that's one of the tools we hope to use. I would say even if we don't get the grant, we need people however we can get them and we need good people. Not to, to the degree that we're willing to sacrifice our standards, but if we have a good candidate, um, I, I'm, I would plead with the council that we consider to get any good candidate that we can onboard to make sure we bolster those numbers. We're in a good spot compared to other cities. There are cities that are in far worse spots than ours. I'm happy that we're in a spot that we can still be selective because a lot of cities don't have that luxury. Uh, we continue to have challenges with the equipment delays. Uh, we finally, you'll recall, a year ago, we got early authorization to order the squad cars because we were behind in our fleet planning. That was prior to last year's budget, we got that authorization. The last car just came back from finishing up fitting today. So that's how long it takes us to replace them. And when we lose one because of operational stuff, um, some of those are um, those are challenges that take a long time to dig out of that hole. Unfortunately, we, we had a, one of our squads was, was wrecked uh, you know, just this past week. So we're continuing to work out of it, but the equipment delays are still, still pretty brutal and impact our operations pretty significantly. Uh, we still struggle with prosecutions specifically at the county level. Um, and I, I don't think I need to expand on that. You guys have a good idea of what the challenges are there.
It's not going to get any better either.
Well-
There's going to be a new person.
A little bit and-
Not going to get any better.
It's not going to get worse.
So uh, going on our, our investigative capacity, so we have a, a fantastic detective. He does really good work. Uh, but as you saw with uh, last year when we proposed doing the SIU investigator, we, we don't have any increased investigative bandwidth. So we're looking at, and as we talk about the potential positions, talking about just ways that we can add some investigative capacity, even if we aren't going to add another detective or another investigator. How do we continue to create space so that we, things don't get delayed, don't get backed up, we can be responsive? And also we can have opportunities for our folks. Uh, again, future fire planning, we spent a whole work session on it, so you guys know exactly where, you know, what our challenges are in figuring out the future on that.
Um, have you, or are you aware of any uh, cases that have been denied by the county attorneys?
Uh, I would have to look through some specifics, but yeah, we have some.
Okay. Is, is it possible for you to get back to me on that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could you share that too? I'd like to understand that too.
Could you give that to councilman?
I will, we'll get him getting a summary, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, again, keep in mind, every case has its own merits, its own mitigating factors, so it's not a blanket thing. And there's only, depending on the case type, there is certain, only certain information that you might be entitled to depending on what the details are. But um, again, attempted, other big challenge, again, I go back to attempted recruitment and hiring for multiple vacant positions. We have vacancies in part-time police officer, reserve officer, and um, we've had the one empty police officer. And as you'll see, advocating for additional officers next year, just so that we can get back to giving our folks some flexibility for time off, create more space to be able to do that training and, and keep supporting our growing community as the demands are increasing. Our call concurrency is increasing. Um, next slide. Again, we spent a whole work session on fire recently. You have a good idea of what the demands and challenges are facing it. Uh, you know, a reminder from the last time we talked, if Corcoran were covered by only one fire department, it would be in the top twenty-five percent of all departments in the state based on calls for service. Um, there's, there's a lot going on and that's, we get a, a significant contribution from our partners. Uh, but also our, our costs are increasing from the partners. You'll see that we have bought, this year was about a twenty percent increase. Um, based on, you know, a lot of that is driven by the formulas in our contracts. Um, they continue to do very good work for us, but the costs also are, are going up at a, at a, at a quick rate. We're a growing city. Uh, so police department staffing, you can see kind of what's existing there. The black boxes are the empty positions, so you'll see on the bottom right, we have a vacant police officer, or a vacant part-time police officer position, vacant reserve officer position. Uh, bottom center, we have the, the uh, police officer position, the vacancy from Officer Warren's retirement. Those are positions that are budgeted for, that we're trying to find good candidates to help um, to help fit in. And the boxes with green around them are the ones that are proposed in this budget. So starting at the bottom, uh, two police officers i- is what I'm proposing that we need. Now again, we didn't, we did, we were able to lab, add the lieutenant position this year, which was beneficial, but we didn't add any of the other public safety positions last year or prior. So we, again, it kind of, the need continues to build up and still doesn't mitigate the future need of our growth. So we're trying to kind of get caught up, but also stay on track as we grow.
I, I had a question on, so the, the vacancies that we currently have that have already been approved in previous budgets.
Yes.
Um, when we don't spend that money, what happens to it within the budget process? Does that roll into some of the funds?
So this past year, that's how we were able to add the lieutenant position, was those two vacancies. But for those two vacancies, it would have been a different type. Uh, we also have flexible in our reserves, so that's a way that when, when we add positions. So if you recall, a year ago, we, when we were going through the process with Sam and Danny, we had the potential of a third candidate that wasn't budgeted for, and we had asked council for the flexibility, that would have come out of our reserves.
Okay.
Uh, so, so we have the ability to flex and, and hit those, uh, but that's not the way that we want to. We want to project for, for staffing at the level, uh, presuming that we will find the people that we need. Uh, because there are good people out there yet, they just haven't made it here yet.
And, and that third position that we had asked for the early authorization was in anticipation of the retirement. Now that candidate ended up not working out as we went through the pre-employment process, so they were not brought on board and we ended up realizing that vacancy that we knew was coming. So again, with the other two, if approved, that would be three officers that we're looking for. The, the candidate pool ebbs and flows, so since that, we posted in March, we probably had four or five candidates that we had brought through the doors, a couple of which went on to a second round interview, one went to background. We ultimately ended up not hiring any of those folks and I know that within the last two weeks, I believe, we received seven applications. So it, it's, we've hit a spike and we're going to vet them the same as we do other candidates, but you know, anticipate coming back that if, if they're good candidates, we certainly want to bring that opportunity to the city that we can, that we don't miss out on what we're, what we're in need of. So the IC Poet, um, advocating for that would be about a fifty thousand dollar um, revenue from the state of Minnesota if approved. We applied, we were supposed to hear back on that grant, the possibility of that grant, um, about two weeks ago. They did not get back to us yet and when we called to check in with them, the uh, the person who administered that grant program was no longer with the state. So we're still trying to find out if we were awarded, but there were only eight positions throughout the state that were being awarded with leftover funding. Uh, and then you'll also see, which was talked about previously, the deputy director relate for fire and emergency management. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please, talk a little bit about them. The, the police officer and police cadet boxes that were on there, again, those are mission essential tasks. And you know, straight-up safety and law enforcement, trying to get back our mid-shift coverage for our officers to hit that overlap in those key busy times in our community. Um, again, depth of staff to cover training and absences, career development opportunities. Our hope is that if we can add those two positions, that we can do like a short-term temporary, some career development opportunity in investigations, where they can job shadow, maybe get a few cases of their own, begin to get that experience. So that if, you know, if there comes a day where we're adding another investigator or if Tim, you know, finds a better opportunity, that we have some folks that can step in internally and maybe step up for that. So it gives us a little bit of ability to develop our bench, um, and gives us that, the depth to be able to do that. We, we don't have that right now because we're just covering shifts.
I, I want to inject, interject just for a second on the cadets. So at IACP, I did have the opportunity to speak with several other chiefs that have cadet programs. And, and I would say that even if we do not receive the IC Poet grant, uh, I, this, that would be a strategy that would help us build our own. Uh, identify someone that, that resonates with our culture and our vision for policing, that then we can help grow through the process. Uh, we've been trying the recruiting strategy, trying to get laterals, trying to get people fresh out of the academies. It hasn't been as fruitful as we'd hoped. We, this next round might be better with seven candidates, but we need to pivot to a new strategy and that's what some departments have done with tremendous success. And so even if we don't get the IC Poet grant, I'd submit that the cadet program is a, an avenue we need to pursue.
What's roughly the annual cost on that?
Uh, I think you average it out what an average officer cost is.
Yeah, I, I, so the grant is about, is for fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand, yeah.
And, and it would include paying for their schooling. So this is a, a degree, it's a transition program. So it looks for, seeks out people with college degrees, tries to get them into the law enforcement field, pays for their transitional schooling and skills uh, while they're in school, including hourly wage. And then um, then you'd also have to train them up like a police officer. So it's really to help facilitate that transition and get folks who might be coming into the field with-
So what do you think the all-in would be on that?
Um, well, I think with the, the fifty thousand dollar revenue, I think we'd be, it's hard to say depending on how much, when they would start, how much we'd have for wages. I think the schooling part of it is generally around twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, and then the remainder can be used towards their wages during their, their schooling and their transition period. And then once they're on the, once they're on the department, they have their standard wages and that kind of stuff, so it's-
So maybe something that would be helpful to get more information um, before we go to approve the final budget would be updates on that grant and overall cost if we do get it versus we don't get it.
Yep.
Chief, quick question. You know, I heard you mention lateral hires and um, do you, do you find or do you have a preference in hiring uh, students and training them in, in uh, the culture of Corcoran PD? Uh, do you prefer that avenue or uh, hiring laterally and accepting perhaps some bad habits that are, that have been formed over the years with that officer?
So uh, bad habits, if we're aware of them, either through the background process or otherwise, are a deal breaker. But I think we need a blend of experience and, and fresh blood. Mostly from a diversity of experience and a diversity of a, age and other, everything else that candidates- But I think we need a blend of experience and, and fresh blood, mostly from a diversity of experience and a diversity of a- age and other, everything else that candidates can bring to us. So when I look at the officers in our department that were lateral entries, and we're talking about a, a Dan Wilcox, Bo Hartnett, Pete Eckenberg, uh, Tim Spelacy, brought a lot of great experience, but we've also had tremendous young folks coming through as we look at, um, you know, Jack who just came on, Danny, Sam, who came from town here right out of college. I think we get a great mix and I think the sweet spot really goes back to, um, character hiring. And we make sure, the most important thing to us is that they fit our community, they fit our style. Um, and if we know that there's bad habits, we, you know, it's, it's different if it was a, a one-off, that's not a matter of character. Um, if there was, you know, something that happened that was less than ideal, we look at the context and we look at long-term. Um, but at the end of the day, I think it's making sure they're right for our style of policing.
Thank you, I, I appreciate your answer, thank you.
Yep. Um, and then we also have the deputy director of fire. You guys were, were briefed on a lot of the functions last year. Um, again, it's, it's really somebody that's wearing our jersey and looking at managing exploring options. Really, at what are our best long-term cost mitigation and maintaining our service level experts, serving as a, uh, sorry, our subject, yeah, serving as our subject matter experts and looking at our city's best interests and priorities, how we roll that out consistently among our three agencies, if we're planning for spending large sums of money on facility. Um, really synchronizing what might be competing interests between fire and EMS. And then really, uh, owning, taking a, a larger ownership of our emergency management items. So really, really trying to drive home and execute on our strategies and priorities, both in the work plan and, and direction that we receive from the council. Um, we've talked about, does it, is the right option to consider starting with, this with a consultant? That's a possibility as well, uh, but-
Is that something you can give us more information on prior to the final budget?
Yeah, uh, maybe we'll, we can connect and I can get an outline from you what we're seeking. I, I would envision, um, if we're looking at a consultant doing some, what about some kind of an RFP process, where we're really outlining what their marching orders would be, um, and what, what we want them to both do operationally and what we want them to report back on as far as data-
Yeah.
Data.
Might be an easier way and a slightly, uh, more perspective way to ease into that position and figure out what exactly we need before we hire someone full-time.
Yep. What we need now might not be what we need in five years.
Yeah.
Yep. Alright, next slide, please. Um, I'm gonna get into this again, it was what, whatever had a five thousand dollar change and was a ten percent increase. You guys got the whole packet that showed all the items, certainly everything's up for discussion, but I, the ones in blue were the ones I, I carved off for the sake of this work session, was those higher impact items and why they're there. So the police state aid, this is on the revenue side, that increase of eighteen percent was assuming that we added the new officers. Uh, if we don't add officers, we likely would not have an increase in state aid. That's formulaic based on, on the cops that we have on the department. Um, the special event services, that's more of a calibration of what we're, what we're working on, that's pass-through funds. So you'd see an increased revenue, we'd see an increased expenditure on the other side, so it's not, um, not that we'd be changing our operations in any large way. And then the, the fine data is really based on historical items. We, I think it's, we'd be more responsible to budget for, for twenty-five thousand and then hopefully do better, rather than over budget and under deliver. Um, getting to the, the police budget, the personnel costs are a big part of it, that's in five oh one oh one, one thirty, three sixty-five. So, um, again, the same as other departments figuring the, the coal adjustment, we don't know specifically where that's gonna come in for police officers. That will depend on contract adjustments, but also benefits, it has the additional cadet police officer and the remaining balance of the police lieutenant position. So that's the, the positions that we talked about are the drivers in the personnel cost category. Training, part of it's inflation and part of it is we have new employees that we need to be training. We also have a young department that will be consuming more, that's consuming more training just in a, as a generality. Operating supplies, uh, we need additional tasers for our staff, uh, we're continuing to grow as a department and then the inflation of costs, um, just the general cost to do business. Prices have gone up on just about everything that we're doing. So the alternative is less training or sta- same training. And this, this really, the, this, this change reflects keeping the same standard of training, um, but we've, our department's growing and the additional tasers that needed. Motor fuels, again, is inflation and department growth. The professional services training, uh, I did, you'll notice that that reflects differently, there was a clerical error in the first draft of the budget. Um, but that one, the big change is related to bringing the in, the cost on the books for the Flock cameras. We're required to do an au- an annual, or, uh, we're required to do an audit, uh, every other year for the ALPRs. So that will be coming up, or every third, every three years, that'll be coming up this next year as we're going into our third year. And looking at some video redaction, our video redaction service software, right now, we have times where it will take weeks of work to try and redact video for one call. And we need, we think this will be a lot more efficient way of doing it, um, looking at this other software. Um, uniforms, again, is related to inflation and growth. Um, next one under the police administration, uh, straight up related to personnel costs only, um, the, any coal adjustment and benefits. Uh, under fire, contract costs increased by nineteen point six three percent. So our costs are going up there, so it's under professional services. All of the other increases there would be related to, um, the, the position that we talked about earlier and only that position. Um, next slide, there, it kinda, we broke out the expense change, broke, broke it out by expenses and by revenue, those changes. Yeah, so you can kinda see i- in summary what those changes might look like. And I'm happy to get into any, uh, dollars and cents questions that you have on other specific changes.
I think for me, uh, I can sort it off, just the stuff I already kinda spoke on, if you could bring that back to us at some point, um, ahead of final passage of the budget, so we have some time to think on that, um, and see our options. Those really were the couple areas that I could see, maybe there's multiple options to look at that are, um, feasible to change and might still provide the same benefit, uh, without totally upending everything in the budget. So those just stood out to me. If we get that additional information, it'd be great.
Yeah, that was the pivot to fire consultant potentially and also the IC Poet, what's the, the grant benefit, benefit versus the projected cost of the position if we didn't go that route.
Yep.
Okay.
I agree. I continue to wrestle with having a dedicated fire expert, given we won't have a fire department. I think the consultant vector might be easier to find somebody that can, you know, give us five hundred hours a year and contribute that sort of amount of expertise that we lack, um, versus trying to find somebody who has that expertise and doesn't want to actually lead a fire service. So hopefully we can find a good candidate that way.
Very likely.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I can provide you with a name, Matt, if that would be helpful, of a consultant.
Yeah, I think, for sure, well, I think we, we wanna get the structure if we decide to go that route, we'll see how the budget stuff works out, we decide to go that route. I'll be asking specifically, what are we trying to accomplish so we, we can do those benchmarks and we'll make sure that they get, I, I would suggest an RFP that they get a, a chance to dial in and respond to what we're doing, but that's appreciated. Or one, we, they can, happy to talk through with them what they are looking for.
Yeah.
Perfect. Anything else?
Okay. Thank you for having high standards.
Yeah, both of you guys, really well done on the presentation and explaining everything. I thought that was really well done. I actually got two compliments on it, so.
Thank you.
Good job.
Alrighty, and does anyone else have anything? If not, we'll, I get a motion to adjourn the work session.
Some more, please.
Second.
All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye.